Folks, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting, public meeting for Wednesday, May 28th. This is a meeting of open to the public specifically in concerning the public hearing for the amendment of the Borough's Master Plan. That is all we'll be hearing tonight. So with that, I would ask that you either silence or turn your phones off. Yeah, and then I'll open up the meeting. Pursuant to the open public meetings law, this is the state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by publication in the Union County Hawk on January 2nd, 2025, posting on the Borough website and by posting and filing of said notice on the office of the municipal clerk. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the board. At this time, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence and a flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for the wish and advance of a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's our roll call, please.
Mayor Blumenstock?
Here.
Ms. Lysak?
Here.
Councilman Carney? Chair Green?
Here.
Ms. Vilagio?
Here.
Mr. Nearstead?
Here.
Mr. Barkin? Ms. Hay?
Here.
Ms. Bianco?
Here.
And Mr. Byers?
Here.
Okay, and if everyone has had an opportunity to read the minutes from the May 14th Planning Board meeting, do I hear a motion to accept those minutes as is?
I'll make the motion to accept them.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing now, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we're going to proceed with our main person here, and that's going to be open for the public hearing for the amendment of the Borough Master Plan, proposed housing element, and fair share plan. And it was prepared by Michael Mistrata, who's with us here tonight, from Harvard Consultants, to address the requirements of the New Jersey Fair Housing Act. Michael, take it away.
Do you want to start, or you want to? I'll start, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. What we're going to do is I'll try to outline what the process is for you.
Okay.
And then Mike is going to give you the plan. And so I'll start by saying that since the 1970s, this-
I'm just going to, just to put on record, you're Bob Renard.
I am Robert Renard. Renard Calicchio, our office is in Cranford. I am special counsel for the Borough for affordable housing.
Thank you.
So, so since the, basically, the 1970s, the courts of New Jersey, led by the Supreme Court, have determined that all municipalities are required to provide for affordable housing. The, it started with just Supreme Court decisions, then was followed by the Fair Housing Act, which created the Council on Affordable Housing, COA. That process was in effect until roughly 2015, when the Supreme Court declared that COA wasn't doing its job, and the courts took over the overseeing of affordable housing and housing plans. In 2014, in March of last year, the legislature passed and the governor signed an amendment to the Fair Housing Act. We call it Fair Housing Act II, or the amended Fair Housing Act. And that new Fair Housing Act set out a new procedure for how affordable housing was to be managed. And it's essentially a combination of an administrative process and a court process. So the Council on Affordable Housing, COA, was abolished. There is a department or division in the Department of Community Affairs, which essentially oversees all municipalities with respect to affordable housing. In order to protect a municipality from builder's remedy lawsuits, you had to sort of opt in. More than 400 of the 500, and I think it's 565 municipalities now, or somewhere in that number, over 400 of them have opted into this process. So, as I said, it was established by the Department of Community Affairs in combination with the administrative office of the courts. So what, what we've done in terms of the process is, in January, we filed, in accordance with the procedures that were established, a what's called a declaratory judgment action. It requested, essentially, that the courts protect Garwood from builder's remedy lawsuits. The Department of Community Affairs, under the statute, determined what the, what the obligation of each municipality in the state was, as it calculated it. It's a fairly complicated formula. The state is broken down, well, first, they decide how many affordable housing units are required in the state, which is 150-something thousand. Then they are divided into regions. There are six regions in the state. Garwood is in Region 2. The need in that region is then divided up by a fairly complicated formula that's made up of three main components, or it's actually three components. One of them is based on commercial ratables, one of them is based on income levels in the municipality, and one of them is based upon available land. Since Garwood has very little, virtually no, available land, that third factor is not much of a consideration in DCA's having arrived at Garwood's number, but the other two factors are in relation to the other municipalities. So in other words, there's a certain amount of need, and it gets divided up, and the more that one municipality takes, the less the other is obligated for, under the DCA formula. It's not, it's not voluntary. So the Department of Community Affairs determined that for the 10-year period that begins July 1, 2025, that Garwood has a, what's called a present need obligation of 31 units, which the present need obligation is what is called the rehabilitation share. That is not new units to be constructed, but it is a number of existing units, which the DCA has determined that it's Garwood's share to be rehabilitated. Mike will explain that part of it to you, but essentially, Garwood works through the Union County Community Development Block Grant Program to satisfy that present need. The prospective need, which is the number of units which is required to be added, was 80 units. And Garwood looked at, when I say Garwood, I mean, we had a committee that consisted of myself, Mike, the mayor, a councilperson, the chairman, I'm trying to think of who else was on the committee, but in any event, the committee reviewed this number and recommended to the council that it'd accept that number because it really, the numbers really couldn't be challenged. And so 80 units is the number that we have to come up with, or at least a, I shouldn't say have to come up with, at least have to plan for. So I think I've outlined, essentially, what the process is. So recognizing that nobody likes the process, but it is the process nonetheless that's been established by the legislature, and that the municipality is, virtually, has no choice other than to participate in the process. As it's established, we need to come up with a plan to accommodate those units, and it, nothing ever goes away, so that we not only have to deal with the 80 units of prospective need, but we have some unmet need from the third round that also has to be dealt with. So unless there are questions about the process, I'm going to let Mike take over and talk about how he proposes, in conjunction with those who are on the committee, to meet this need, or at least to deal with it.
Does anyone on the board have any questions, Bob?
Just one question, Bob. What is your unmet need number, do you know?
I, was it 39, Mike?
Yes.
39?
Fire round. 39.
Thank you.
I should, you know, I should have said also that this is a public hearing at a proper time, that there will be time for public comments on the, on the public hearing. A public hearing is required on any amendment to the master plan, and the, this is what's called the housing plan element and fair share plan, and it will be adopted, assuming that you accept this by the Planning Board this evening, hopefully by resolution, as an amendment to the master plan.
Chair, I just, if I could just add one thing, that we did have that committee who looked at the number and recommended that we work with the DCA with that number, but I just want to add, it also came to the Planning Board after that.
Yes.
Because I know everybody took a long time to really have that discussion up here.
So.
But I know you, Mike was here with us when we did that, so the Planning Board recommended it to the council as well.
Thank you for clarification. Anyone else from the board? Okay. Michael?
Thank you. Michael Mistrata, I'm a licensed professional planner, I'm sorry, Michael Mistrata, I'm a licensed, yeah, it's on, professional planner, worked for Harvard Consultants, offices at 320 North Avenue East in Cranford. My office and myself personally, professionally, have, I have represented the Borough, I think, since 2015 on affordable housing matters, may have been 2016. I've handled my office on, I've handled the third round plan. As your affordable housing expert, I testified in court at the fairness hearing, the compliance hearing, so I'm familiar with the third round, and we've now prepared the fourth round plan for our Borough. I'm, my presentation's really twofold. One is like a very high-level overview of the document itself, the plan itself, and then I have one handout, and the handout, I have extra for the public, there's extra copies. I just want to quickly go through my high-level overview of the plan, then I'll hand out the handout, because this is, the handout's what everybody really wants to talk about. It's how many units are going where. So I boiled this document down to a five-page handout, and we'll just talk about that. But I just want to at least put enough information on the record. This master plan, housing element, fair share plan, was signed by myself and Gabe from my office. It was, it has been on file with the Borough Clerk's Office and the Planning Board since May 16th. We've also sent hard copies to the Office of State Planning Advocacy, as well as the Union County Planning Board, and the Borough has an electronic copy of the plan itself, so that the public can review, either hard copy in Borough Hall or online. Everything I'm talking about tonight is contained in that plan. The plan was prepared to address the Borough's fourth round affordable housing obligation, which is a time period from July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2035. And in accordance with the amended Fair Housing Act, the legislature, the legislature declares that the Fair Housing Act, as amended and supplemented, is intended to implement the Mount Laurel Doctrine, as Bob has mentioned, this goes back to the 70s, and that municipalities in compliance with the Fair Housing Act are also in compliance with the Mount Laurel Doctrine. That's our goal, and that's what this plan is intended to demonstrate. The amended Fair Housing Act was adopted by Governor Murphy, May 20, 2024. That set off a series of deadlines for every municipality in New Jersey to address, and the Borough of Garwood hasn't met every single deadline, as outlined in the plan. There's an entire breakdown of every deadline since last summer, all the way up through tonight. Our responsibility now, as a board and as a community, is we have until June 30, 2025, to adopt an amended housing plan, and then later have it adopted or endorsed, I should say, by resolution by our town, Borough Council, and then have those documents submitted down to the DCA. That ends our planning process, at least for the fourth round, and then it goes into the hands of those who will review it. There's going to be a series of people, including the court, and there's planners assigned by the courts, known as special adjudicators, formerly special masters, who will review the report and issue comments or a report, which is due by the last day of August, so we should have any response on our plan by September 1st in writing. And then there's a series of deadlines, I won't go through all of them, but then there's a series of deadlines where we, you know, if there, if we do have to amend the plan or address comments, then there's other deadlines later into the fall and early next year. There's a detailed history on pages 1 through 6 of the document, that goes through a very detailed history of each steps of the affordable housing process and the Mount Laurel Doctrine. I'm not going to go through each step, but if anybody from the public is interested, I think there's a very nice breakdown on pages 1 through 6. And then on page 7, there's a summary of the Borough's past affordable housing history, which I think is important to take a look at, because it demonstrates that Borough of Garwood has a long history of compliance, and has, of putting together plans, and having affordable housing constructed in our, in our Borough. So we have, we are in compliance, we always have been, and we have a nice history that's outlined, starting on page 7. Pages 8 through 13 gets into a very detailed analysis and breakdown of the amended Fair Housing Act. Bob's already touched upon certain aspects of it, and so did I. I'm not going to go through that again, but if there's anybody from the public or the board who wants a really detailed understanding of the fourth round methodology, how it's calculated, there's three factors, land, the income factor, land capacity factor, and the equalized non-residential evaluation factor. There's a series of discussion and breakdown of how it was calculated, broken down by state, by region, and our Borough, which concluded with an obligation of 80. I, I spoke at this Planning Board meeting, and also at the council, I recommended that we keep, initially, my thoughts were a little bit different, but after we did a detailed analysis, we recommended that we accept the 80, and which we did before the deadline of January 31st, and those documents were filed, filed, and we since got a court order dated March 27, 25, 2025, that sets our number at 80 for the fourth round. So this is a 10-year plan, it's designed to address an obligation of 80 new units or prospective need, as well as 31 units of present need. Part of the plan, there's requirements of this plan that are slightly different than previous plans. One is the housing demographic and employment tables are all addressed on pages 17 through 31, very detailed analysis of all the demographics of our Borough, broken down by many different tables. It's pretty interesting information, if I'm somebody from the public who wants to see how our Borough has grown over the years. On page 31, we start really getting into the plan itself for the first time. There's a section in the new regulation, a new amended act, where we have to address consideration of lands committed, consideration of lands proposed by developers, developers to commit, who are committed to providing affordable housing in our, in our Borough for the fourth round. Identify two of those, starting on page 31. The first one is the Garwood Paper Board, at 75 North Avenue, Block 211, Lot 6. This is a 4.54 acre parcel. I'm going to go into more detail in a minute on that. And then the second one is known as the ACP Partnership Site. We're required to address in our plan this development, because the developer has approached the Borough. I met with them to talk about a potential, they have an interest in providing affordable housing, so we folded that site partially into the plan, and I'll go into more detail when I go through my handout. Then on page 32, there's a section that addresses the consistency of this housing plan with the state development and redevelopment plan. There's a strong connection required now in the amended Housing Act, that this plan, that our housing plan is generally in alignment with the goals and recommendations of the state development and redevelopment plan, which is currently being updated and will be released by the state. I don't, I'm not going to say a date, because I'm told it's sometime this fall, but I don't know that date. Pages 34 through 34, 33 and 34, we get into the compliance mechanisms of the fourth round. And that's where I just want to stop for a second, because I want to hand out this document, because this, I have one handout, I have enough for all the board members, and extras for, extra copies for the public, and this is really what everybody wants to talk about, so I want to just get right into it. You could call it Fourth Round Plan Compliance Mechanisms. Mr. Chairman, I think we should at least maybe mark it into evidence, just so it's part of the record. I would, I should have put a title page on it and a date, I apologize I did it. I would title this handout as Fourth Round Plan Compliance Mechanisms. And it's simply, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. It's a six-page handout that addresses the six sites that are folded into the plan, that address our obligation of 80 in the fourth round.
Okay, so we'll accept that as a, as a document to be-
And all the information that's on this handout is also in the plan itself. There's no new information or anything, it's just that I just try to make it a lot easier to go through.
Okay.
Now, let's just mark that as Mistrata 1 with today's date.
All right. Mistrata 1. I'll go with that.
That's a lot easier than what you were calling it.
Okay. All right, we'll go with Mistrata 1. This handout, what this handout does is, I noticed I have a document here, it's like 600 pages, there's a lot ingrained in there. What, what the Planning Board members want to know, what the public wants to know, is, as Bob said before, and I touched on it earlier, our obligation in the fourth round is 80, okay? That's the plan. We have to put together a plan that addresses that number. That's our obligation as a community. And we address that through a series of six properties, six sites. I'm going to go through them one at a time. First one-
Actually, Mike, we should clarify, just for anybody who's listening, this is 80 units of affordable housing, which is based upon, if we, if it's one out of five or 20%, we're, we're talking, obviously, a multiple of five of that unit of, of actual housing units.
That's correct. With that, with one exception, and I'll touch upon that exception as I go through it, but that's the age restricted, that's already constructed units. But outside of that, one caveat, this, Bob's correct, it's 20%, so it's times five, when you see the numbers that I'm talking about, as far as the affordable housing numbers. So the six properties that are in the plan to address our fourth round obligation, the first one is, I know it as a Garwood Paper Board, and I'm calling this one 2. Third round, had a plan, 124-unit inclusionary family unit rental project on the Paper Board site on North Avenue, and that's 124 units. There were 100, there were 106 market rate units, and a total of 18 affordable units that gave us 19 credits. That's part of our third round plan, that's not changing, that's staying as is. Here's the difference. On Garwood Paper Board 2, I call it 2, is there's, there used to be a stored, self-storage building on the property. That's in the plan right now. The copy of the redevelopment plan is in this document, it's available for the public. That project has preliminary and final site plan approval, and has never moved forward, it was never constructed. The developer, as round four approached, the developer approached me, the town, Borough, I'm sorry, everybody involved, and says, there's no longer an interest in constructing the self-storage building. Instead, they're aware of the fourth round obligation, and they wanted to address in part some of our obligation on this property. That's being done in a second building, I call it Paper Board 2. Paper Board 1, 124 units, Paper Board 2, we get rid of the self-storage, and we add a 57-unit, age-restricted building. With the 20% set aside, it's 11.4, you round up, we get 12 affordable units out of Paper Board 2. Now, I'm about to go into age-restricted housing on my next slide, so we're maxing out our age-restricted obligation on my next slide, I'll talk to that, that in a minute. So we can't exceed that 30% of 80 for our age-restricted numbers. So the 12 affordable housing units that are generated by Paper Board 2 are being moved to, and they will be constructed as part of Paper Board 1. So to be very clear, as clear as I can, Paper Board 2, the new second building on the Paper Board site, will be 57 age-restricted units, with no affordable housing units in there, 57 age-restricted units. The 20% set aside that that building creates are being put into Paper Board 1, the first building. The unit count of the first building is not going up. There's no additional units in unit, in building number one. It's still 124 units. It's just that we're getting now 31 affordable housing units mixed into that project when Paper Board 1 is constructed. Okay, so we're capturing 12 units right there. That's step one. And I'll talk about bonus credits in a minute, but let me just get through the projects, it's easier. Number two, we have the Westfield Senior Housing Building. This is a built complex, age-restricted. We used some credits in the third round, and in accordance, and supported by our special master, who wrote a report on the Westfield Senior Housing Center building at that time. There are excess units that the Borough has never, did not take credit for in the prior round, because we couldn't, because we maxed out our cap, but there's excess units could be used, and are available for the Borough to use in the fourth round. And we're doing just that. We're using 24 credits out of the Westfield Senior Housing Building to max, 24 credits is the 30% of 80, so we're maxing out our age-restricted requirement by using existing units that are already constructed at the Westfield Senior Housing Center. So that's 24. One difference, one significant difference in the amended Fair Housing Act in the fourth round, which was very different, and which was not a requirement in the third round, was you have to identify, after you do, that's RRDP, after, after you do the projects, you have to identify when you get into your unmet need, you have to identify at least 25% of your unmet need, your remaining unmet need, has to be identified as sites likely to redevelop, and they are to be put into the plan either with straight rezoning, or through a redevelopment process. The third site I have is a portion, a 3.66 acre portion of the ACP Partnership Property, Block 301, Lot 1. We identify this site as likely to redevelop, with a 20% set aside, I'm sorry, 20% of 20 units per acre on the 3.66 acre parcel, that's highlighted in red on the left-hand corner of the site, would generate a total of 73 total units. These have to be family, these have to be non-age-restricted, because we've already exceeded, met our cap. So 20% of that number would be 14.6, or- So twenty percent of that number would be fourteen point six or fifteen affordable housing units. Next is the Garwood Rest. This is going to be an overlay that would allow for a mixed-use building on this property. Retail, commercial, possibly on the first floor, apartments on top of it. It would generate six total units. Two of those would be set aside as affordable housing units. The next one is known as the North Avenue Garwood Mall, Block One-One-Four, Lot Four Point Oh One. It is developed. Most people, I know it as a former Saladworks site. That's where I used to go. It's not there anymore. But there's a photograph. You see the area on the frontage of the site, walk, within walking distance of our train station, near Mass Transit. It's a developed site that's only one-story. And we believe there's opportunities for additional residential on this site at twenty units an acre. Twenty units an acre on the one-point-eight-seven acres, we get a total of thirty-seven total units with a twenty percent set aside equals seven point five, or you round up, we get eight units. And then finally, the last one is known as Standard Nipple Properties. Block Two-Eleven, Lot Eight, Nine, and Ten. Collectively, the three properties are one-point-six-one acres. Twenty units an acre would place thirty-two units on this site. Twenty percent set aside equals six point four. Round up, we get seven units. So what we tried to hit before was eighty. And if you add up twelve from Paperboard Two, the fifteen from ACP Partnership, and the twenty-four credits from the Westfield Senior Housing, and the bonus credits you're allowed of twenty-five percent of that number is twelve. That brings us to sixty-three, leaves us seventeen short. The seventeen is comprised of, like I said, North Avenue Garwood Mall, eight credits. Garwood Rest, two. Standard Nipple, seven. There's your seventeen. Sixty-three plus seventeen, that's our eighty. And at a very high level, that's the plan. I could go into a lot of detail if you want, but I'll just conclude with this. This is, there's a lot of work, even if the board does adopt the plan this evening. The, the reason why this document is as thick as it is is we have to put a lot of draft information in here, draft ordinances, draft redevelopment studies, draft redevelopment plans. We, our next step, should the board approve this housing plan tonight, is we have a, we quickly go into drafting ordinances. Now, the ones that are in here are only draft. So they're there for your review and comment, public's comment, further refinement. But those ordinances then have to be turned into real ordinances that are adopted and introduced by our council, referred to our planning board, then second reading adopted by our council. And on a parallel tract, we need to go back and amend the redevelopment plan for, like I said before, the Garwood Paperboard, because the Paperboard Redevelopment Plan that is currently adopted by our, our council is still the old Paperboard Plan. So the developer has sent us comments. My office has started working on those edits. It's literally in my inbox. I just have to get to it. But that would be our next step is to start moving forward with the redevelopment plans, the amended redevelopment plans, and enacting the ordinances that puts all of the zoning in place.
But our critical timeframe right now is that June thirtieth date, correct?
The critical time right now, the deadline is June thirtieth to have this plan adopted, resolution adopted, and then have a council resolution adopted endorsing the actions of the planning board. And collectively, those two resolutions and this plan, Bob will send down to the state. And that all has to be done and packaged by June thirtieth.
Actually, they have to be filed within two days of adoption, so we're, the only way you would have, have the June thirtieth deadline is if you, you know, were adopting on June twenty-eighth. But we have the councils, we're planning on, what's the date again? June twelfth, going to the council on June twelfth, so we'll have this filed by the fourteenth. Just to sort of clarify, and I, I'm assuming that the board knows this, but the public may not. What, what we're required to do is to zone for the possibility of affordable housing. So all of these plans are not mandates to the property owners. They are, they make it so that the property owner has the ability, if they want, to provide this housing. So for example, where we do an overlay zoning, the existing zoning remains in place. Whoever's there can continue to operate as they're operating for as long as they want to operate. They have the option of using the overlay zoning or a, if it were a redevelopment plan, for example, a redevelopment plan. And we're obligated, as Mike indicated, because we, we can't meet the need that's been assigned from available land in Garwood that we're required to select some properties, as Mike indicated, quote, likely to redevelop, close quote, and provide for them to have the possibility of providing affordable housing. So none of this is a mandate to anyone, to any property owners. It's, it's a, a plan. However, I have to say that unlike past rounds, so in the past, we would go either to COA, the Council on Affordable Housing, or in the third round to the courts. And you would ask for a judgment of compliance and repose, which meant that once your plan was approved, you were good for ten years, or at least the end of the round, whenever it was. So the round that started, the round that started in the courts in two thousand and fifteen, which actually had a gap period that went back fourteen years or so, and then went forward ten years, but we got a judgment of compliance and repose in two thousand and seventeen or so, which meant we're good, nobody's going to look at us again until two thousand and twenty-five. This round, under the amended Fair Housing Act, which was, I have to say, partially written, we believe, by the Fair Housing Center. And they have the ability to come back after, at various periods and say, well, you have this plan, but no actual housing has been produced or not enough housing, and they have the right to bring us back and make us come up with a different plan. So it's a little bit different than the prior rounds.
Okay, this time I'll open it up. Kathy first, and then Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Stephen, go.
Steve?
Six.
Sure.
Paperboard, I had thirty.
Paperboard, the, the Paperboard has nineteen credits today. Paperboard One has nineteen credits today.
I, what did it have, eighteen units and?
Special needs, that was a two-bedroom.
Special needs, that two-credit floor, this was a two-bedroom.
A total of nineteen credits are in Paperboard today, and that's approved, fully approved with site plan approval.
Okay.
Okay? It just hasn't, they just haven't built it.
Built it.
Okay, on that property was another building to self-storage that comes off. The new building, the second building, I call Paperboard Two, is fifty-seven units. Twenty percent of fifty-seven is eleven point four. You round up to twelve, so there's twelve right there. But because we're using the senior housing to max out our age-restricted units, we can't build more age-restricted housing on this property. But we still need the credits. So we're moving to twelve from Paperboard Two, Paperboard One, right next door. So the nineteen plus twelve is thirty-one.
That's what I thought.
And the thirty-one, so there's going to be thirty-one affordable housing units of the hundred and twenty-four that are constructed in Paperboard One. So there's thirty-one total units in that project. But to be clear, only twelve count towards the fourth round because Paperboard One already counts towards the third round. Senior Housing Center's twenty-four credits, they're already there. We get credit for those. That's, that's twenty-four. ACP Partnership, there's a total of fifteen family rental units that would come out of that project. That's three-point-six-six acres times twenty units an acre equals seventy-three total units on the three-point-six-six acre site. With a twenty percent set aside, it's fourteen point six or fifteen. So there's our fifteen. Garwood Rest, we would pick up two of six of, and these would be in a mixed-use building, because we don't want, it's, it's that corner piece of property on South Avenue. So we're looking to, if that site redevelops or is reconfigured, right now it's dominated by a surface parking lot and a small building, as you could see in the handout. So we believe there's an opportunity there on the upper floors to have apartments and pick up two units. Then there's the North Avenue Garwood Mall. Where's that paper?
I had eight.
Yeah. I'm just looking, I'm sorry. I was looking for my handout, so I'd make sure I have the right numbers in front of me. We would have eight there, and then on Standard Nipple, the last one would be seven units on that property. The seven, the two, and the eight is your seventeen units of unmet need combined with the sixty-three units I spoke about earlier equals our eighty.
Okay.
No questions?
Steve? Anyone?
Yes, I'm good on the seventeen. But then for ACP, it's fifteen.
Fifteen, twelve Paperboard Two, fifteen ACP Partnership.
Twelve, okay.
And twenty-four Westfield Senior Housing. We are allowed twenty-five percent bonus credits, which calculates to twelve credits. So twelve plus fifteen plus twenty-four plus twelve equals sixty-three.
Okay, yeah, we probably should have mentioned that. Every one of these is not a unit. It's, some of them you get bonus credits for. So we got a certain number of credits, depending upon, mostly for family rentals, but there's other bases for credits.
So out, out of this plan, out of the eighty, you have twenty-four that are already existing units at the senior center, and you're getting twelve bonus credits. So out of the eighty, thirty-six are not new construction. Okay, I should have, I should have touched upon that earlier.
Kathy?
I just have a, a question on the ACP property. You mentioned rental. If by chance they could be purchased?
Yeah, they could be for sale, or I should have mentioned.
Sale, because that's what.
The market rate units could be for sale or rental.
Okay.
And the.
Because I, like I saw, saw in, like in the a report, it did mention that, and I just want to put it out there that it, you know, that they could be for sale.
Right.
Based upon what happens.
Correct, a hundred percent. I touch upon that.
And we'll still get the.
Yep. I, I touch upon it in the report that.
Yes, you did.
The ACP Partnership, and again, thank you, I should have mentioned it in my earlier testimony, that one of the initial proposals was to include for-sale housing on that property. So what I should have mentioned that is the affordable, the, the fifteen units that we need have to be family. And they can't, the market, they have to be family, yeah.
But they could be for sale.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Be discussed with.
All right, that was my question.
You're welcome.
And last one, Bill?
Chair, if I could.
Yes.
Can you just also clarify for the public when, because we talked about maxing out the seniors at thirty percent, but there's a certain amount of family, a percentage of family units that we have to provide.
Yeah, fifty percent of your obligation, fifty, and this is, and I thank you, it's just one more rule that they gave us. A couple of changes. They upped the, uh, third round, the fourth round, they upped, they gave you, we got a slight increase in the number of age-restricted housing from twenty-five percent to thirty percent. So we got a little crumb there, a little, little extra. We can't just say, we're Viceland Town, and we'll give you a couple of overlays. Okay, in the fourth round, you have to identify these sites likely to redevelop. That's a new provision. And we identify that with the ACP Partnership property. Another significant change in the law is fifty percent of your obligation has to be addressed with family units. Okay, they could be for sale or rentals, but they have to, this is all designed for families, okay? And you get more bonus credits once you meet your UHAC distribution of bedrooms. Every extra third bedroom you provide over and above what's required by law, you get extra credits. So you could end up providing more bedrooms and have fewer units, depending on how we figure out these bonus credits as we develop these plans. But the incentive is clearly create housing for families. That's throughout the bill. All right, you get bonus credits for redevelopment. You get bonus credits for transit, which we are, near, being near train station. You get bonus credits for providing more bedrooms. Those are the three easy ones that I could think of off the top of my head. My report goes through every single possible scenario if you want to go through that, and we will max out our bonus credits.
And just one more thing, if you could talk about Paperboard a little bit, because I think that was discussed a lot at the very beginning, because there is that new caveat in the rules that likely to be redeveloped and likely to develop. And DCA has to approve this plan. If we went in with this plan and we didn't put any further units over there, if we didn't negotiate that with the developer, do you think we could, I don't want to say get away with it, um, do, could we, would that have been, you know, acceptable to the DCA? Because this was discussed a lot, and the, and the conclusion was they're going to say this hasn't even been developed yet. It's obviously likely because they're working on it, so you need to put more units there.
My, my best guess is if we tried to hold firm and not allow any more residential on Paperboard, given the conditions of the site and everything I know about that site as far as the cleanup, contamination, the condition of it, prior approvals, the fact that it was approved with a self-storage building on it that no longer is viable for this developer, and that we have this fourth round obligation that we have to address, so we have another number that we have to address. We have to identify sites that are likely to redevelop. We've already designated this site as an area needed redevelopment. We've already designated the site as meeting all of the site suitability requirements on the Mount Laurel, on the COA regulations on the round two about having street frontage, utilities, absence of wetlands and environmental constraints and so forth. It fits, this property meets and would check every one of those boxes. So if we rolled out a plan that had no additional residential on Paperboard in my, and we tried to put it elsewhere at higher densities or other sites, I think you would end up with all of those other sites that we would have chose to, other than this site, and you end up would have having, obviously the developer would have challenged, and And you end up would have having, obviously the developer would have challenged and I don't think we have an argument. I would have, I would be hard pressed to argue against a site that I've already said is sound for inclusionary housing. Uh, it's already there and I think you would end up with all of the other sites that we ended up putting into the plan to avoid that site. And then you would have had that site on top of everything else. So if we, that, I hope that answers the question.
No, it does.
All right, I, I would add the plan is subject to challenge, uh, uh, by anyone, a developer, a, um, a property owner who wanted to be included as Mike indicated or by Fair Share Housing Center. Uh, and regardless of whether or not anybody challenges it, uh, it still has to be reviewed and approved of by the special adjudicator. The, um, Vicinage Mount Laurel judge and then the assigned program judge. So it's still got to go through, what, three more approvals?
Right.
Um, and, uh, you know, if, if, for example, we didn't, even if you didn't include that site, you'd, you'd just have to come up with another site. We would have to have a plan where we added something else somewhere else. So, um, of the, you know, of the alternative, which would be to now try to find someplace to put the units that we're not getting out of the paperboard site. We'd have to find another location. Um, and frankly, it just doesn't make sense when we have this, um, site that's available, so.
Okay.
I think you would end up with both. I think you would end up with the other sites and this site after this whole process is over.
Okay, no, I, I thank you. I just, I think that will be the big question coming to myself and other council people was, you know, why didn't you hold firm on the storage facility instead of, um, adding this, uh, age restricted building? But I think, obviously I think age restricted building is the least impactful on infrastructure and schools. So if we had to, that's the best possibility. So I just wanted sort of that on the record that.
So to be clear, the new building on paperboard is 57 units of age restricted housing. Okay.
Mary Lynn?
Yes, I just, um, wanted to understand what constitutes a family unit. Is it a three-bedroom unit?
Now, there's a, the UHAC rules, uh, families broken down, there's minimum and maximums. Um, for, and I'm only talking about the affordable units, not the markets. The affordable units is a maximum, 20% of the affordable units can be one bedroom, 20%. A minimum of the affordable units have to be, shall be three bedrooms. And then the remainers, the, the other 50, 50% can be two bedrooms. So I know there's a little wiggle room in there, but those are your minimums and maximums. And as you can imagine, every municipality wants to max out the one bedrooms, which everybody does, okay? 20% of those can be. Um, but as we work through this plan and we figure out the bonus crediting, the crediting and the bonus credits and we work with these developers, we may find as we work through a redevelopment plan on a particular project that we might want to increase the number of three bedrooms. I know that's not what people want to hear. However, if I could show you that if we add a couple of extra three bedrooms and we could lower the number of units elsewhere, that's something that I would at least present to you and to the council and say it's an opportunity to max out your bonus credits. This, this, the, the amended Fair Housing Act is really strong about providing family units. It's throughout the whole bill, yeah, 50% of your obligation has to be addressed by family units. And there's emergency UHAC rules out there right now. Um, I have a copy of them with me tonight, but I don't want to get into this because there's a new set of rules coming out. They're supposed to be published, uh, or made available to the public sometime this fall, post-September. That will, that may or may not change what I just told you. I just want to be clear about it. Because the new UHAC rules are, are, they, they control bedroom distribution, income distribution, housing type. And you have to have similar housing type now between affordables and the market. They regulate the square footage now a lot more than they did in the past. They have to be of similar size of the lowest, smallest market rate unit. So, and they're, they also are requiring, we always did this, but that the, the affordable units are mixed throughout the development. They're not placed in any one wing, one floor or one building. They have to be in the same general location. So a lot of these new rules that are coming out are designed to obviously push the family, but also make sure that the fa, the affordable unit is similar in nature, size, type as the market and that they're dispersed throughout.
Kathy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Follow up to the family unit. So as, as part of supporting that we're meeting the 50% obligation, do we need to identify how many family units would be at each site or is?
Yeah, I do that within the plan and I showed that we satisfied a 50% requirement, which is probably one of the hardest requirements to meet in a replant.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy? Oh. Dave?
Well.
Yeah, Bill?
Um, just a couple of quick ones. Um, I inter, I heard everything you said to Mary Ann's question. I'm not sure I got an answer. Mary Ann's direct question was, are family units three-bedroom units?
No. No, they don't have to be three-bedroom.
They don't have to be.
Wait, I want to clarify that. Yes. They have to be affordable.
Minimum of three bedroom.
Talking about.
No.
Hold on, we're talking about affordable units, right? We're talking about the affordable units. The rules say a minimum of 20% of your affordable units shall be three bedrooms. That's, that's not debatable, okay? So to answer your question, yes, you have to have three bedrooms. 20% of them have to be three bedrooms.
I think the question was, are only, do only three bedrooms units count as family units?
Oh.
And the answer to that is no.
Right, you have 20%.
So what else counts?
Two bedrooms and one bedroom.
Two bedrooms. Well, does a one bedroom count as a family unit?
Yes, 20% of them. A maximum 20% can be one, a minimum 20% can be three. All right.
Okay, okay.
Small family, Bill.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Could, I mean, I, I won't, you know, we all know. Cause as you said, everybody built one and twos, nobody built threes and, and so I thought that was a very, uh, poignant question. And it seems as if like they really didn't, you know, have to have X number.
What it is, is that the family units are as opposed to other types of units that you can get credit for it, like for example, special needs units. I'm trying to think of some, what are some of the others?
Some group homes you can use.
Group homes, for example. But they're not considered family units. So 50% of the units have to be family units and that's the one, two and three bedrooms.
Yeah.
Apartments.
Okay, so it's all inclusive, all right.
Of which, as Mike indicated, only a certain amount could be one bedroom and a, a certain amount must be three bedroom and then the ones in between could be two bedrooms.
Okay, and then if you start providing more threes than you're supposed to, then you get these extra credits.
Right, right, that I got. All right, so I would like to just go over, going forward then, okay? Who adopts what? So you're asking the planning board now to, um, adopt the master plan amendments recommended by the plan.
Yes.
Okay, and do you have those master plan amendments for all, what is it, six of these sites?
Yes.
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 All right, so that does not go to council, that's the sole jurisdiction of this board. Master plan amendment, right?
Master plan is this board.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure who's doing what.
Right.
Uh, fair share plan, actually we recommend that to council, right?
No, that's part of the master plan amendment. Otherwise it's called the housing element and fair share plan. That's what you're going, presumably going to adopt tonight.
All right, so master, typical master plan amendment doesn't go to council.
And the reason why this has to go to the council is because, um, the, um, both the act, well, there's a little discrepancy between what the Fair Housing Act says and what the administrative directive that implemented it say. But, um, the, the intention, I think, of the legislation was that you would have not only adopted the planning board, having adopted the master plan amendment, that is the housing element and fair share plan, but all of the implementing ordinances, including all the redevelopment plans and everything else would have been adopted by June 30th. That is impossible. We have determined that that is just, it isn't going to happen, it's not going to happen in any town that we know of. So, um, we are going to include with what we're submitting to the state or to the courts on the state, um, a, an adopted hopefully housing element and fair share plan together with, as Mike said, of his plan is draft ordinances, redevelopment plans, et cetera. Um, and because they are only in draft and have not, those things have to be adopted by the governing body. Since they have not been adopted by the governing body, we are required to have a resolution of the governing body endorsing the housing element, fair share plan and essentially agreeing, although you can't really bind the governing body, but essentially agreeing to implement the housing element and fair share plan. So there, the governing body will be asked to take a vote and say, yes, we're endorsing this plan that's been adopted by the planning board. Uh, including those ordinance that are ordinances, resolutions, et cetera, that are included in the appendix to the plan.
Okay. If I got most of that, and correct me if I go wrong here. By June 30th, you, you're not saying, or I guess Bob, what you're saying is they expect municipalities to have a fully developed redevelopment plan if you're going through redevelopment. As you said, that can't be done.
It's, that's what we said, it can't be done. I mean, the legislation, the legislation uh, and the administrative directive say that the appendix to the housing element, fair share plan is supposed to include adopted ordinances and resolutions. And then there's a little kind of an asterisk, it's not really an asterisk, but a kind of an asterisk that you have to find that says if you don't do that, then it has to be endorsed by the governing body.
Okay, so Mike, if I heard correctly, I think you said your office is actually looking, you're working with the paperboard developer looking at a potential, if I understood it correctly, redevelopment plan.
Yes, we have a redevelopment plan in place today. The developer has provided edits, comments to that existing redevelopment plan to my office. We're evaluating that and editing the redevelopment plan, which is going to come to.
That's where I'm headed. When is that coming here?
If it was, I'm, I'm.
I'm not rushing it. I'm just, a lot of people are rushing it.
No, it's not rushing.
Come to the council first?
Yeah, we go to council first and then planning.
Right, then we come back. First too, but.
Uh, however.
But whatever you want, but okay, so when do you, when do you, is that August?
No, they, they want it done tomorrow.
And I, and I, I understand, I was also listening to Bob.
I'm trying to.
We have seen this redevelopment plan. I'm going to take something silly, okay? One of the biggest fights that, uh, disagreements I had with paperboard first round of round one, no, not round one. Paperboard one, okay?
Round three.
That's correct, that's correct.
Yeah.
With parking. Okay, they wanted two spaces per unit. I thought it was absolutely ridiculous. Um, now you're working with them on parking, okay? And you're going to come in with something.
Um, and I have your comments. I'm sure you have your comments.
But if, but if.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's good. We're, we're.
Yeah.
So they're going to come in and they're going to want a minimum of two spaces per unit. And it's amazing to me that you're putting all this together and we're getting into the detail of, you know, number of spaces per unit with, with all this. It's mind blowing. Let's say they come with two and let's just say this, this board says it's too many. You buy a train station. We gain credits for being by a train station. We don't want all this impervious coverage because our storm drains are, you know, can't handle already. We say, no, it's one. Okay, and planning board goes as one, council goes with one. And I'm just taking it out because that's a possible scenario. Now, the developer, paperboard probably isn't going to like that, okay? We, are we in, are we in court over that?
They're making suppositions here.
So I mean, I understand it, but they're working on a redevelopment.
Yeah, I don't want to.
We haven't seen.
I mean, we can't litigate it in public, Bill, you know.
Okay, all right, let me rephrase that then. So, so you're putting together with developer redevelopment plan right now. And I know we're kidding about, in one way we're kidding, but about when we're going to get it, but when do you think we're going to get it?
I mean, I've internally in my office, I'm trying to produce a draft to the borough within approximately two weeks.
Wow.
I'm in the middle of a lot right now.
Yeah.
But.
So.
How many counts?
12.
12.
So, uh, we're getting through it, but I have, it's, I'm here tonight, but the, the smart people are in my office. Um, they're, you know, they're really good. Um, but it's a priority. I understand developer wants it done. I know the borough and, and the community is tired of looking at the site the way it is. We have an obligation, it's part of our plan, it's part of our third round plan, it's part of our fourth round plan. Our job is to make the best possible project that we can. The developer has committed to the same level of architectural design, use of building materials and, and the features, if you remember, I don't want to go too far into. Because I'll be here one night only talking about that project and that's the night for it. We'll go into parking, bike, everything you want.
Yeah.
But they have committed to the same level of architectural design, building standards and materials as they had in the prior plan, which was substantial. And we're talking a significant amount of amenity space and so forth. So I understand your concern about parking. There's also a lot of very, from a planning standpoint, there's incredible attributes to that project that I think are, are, will be a big benefit to our community. So, but I'll stop there and I'll save that presentation.
Last comment and I'm done too. I know, um, uh, Chairman wants to move this along, but I guess my, my concern always has been the planning board. And so, um, it always has, has bothered me over 35 years, okay, of actually doing these things. I won't count the first number of years. And where the developer and the planner, you know, develop this, but the planning board isn't included in those stages of development. I just want to make sure that my fellow board members and I, you know, have enough time to review what's being repaired, that we can comment, those comments aren't just going to be, you know, I'm sorry, we have a deadline on June 30th, we can't take that, you know, that they, and I don't mean you do that, I'm just saying you're under the gun.
What I'm, what I have to do tonight, do what this plan does is set density and sites, okay? There will be a time when we're going to get into either zoning ordinances or redevelopment plans that are going to get into all of the various design standards. But they're not, um, part of this plan. This plan is really about affordable housing, obligation of 80, how are you going to address it? Give me a site, give me a density, give me a location. That's what this plan does. I understand everything you're talking about and I agree with you on everything except for going down to 1.0. But, um, I'm a little bit higher than that. But there, there will be a time and a place, just like all the draft ordinances, that's what the planning board wants to dive in.
Exactly.
And getting into that and then getting into the.
And it's always presented to us that without an opportunity for us to comment, I don't think anybody's ever come to us and said, no, we can't talk about that anymore.
No, no, Mr. Chairman, what I'm talking about is when it goes through the planning office and, and developer, then it goes to council, then it gets to us, it's like, it's not that it's written in stone, but it's certainly written in something and I just want to make.
I was around the last time and there was plenty out of here.
I know.
That then went back to us, back and forth, so.
Anything else?
I will guarantee.
Okay, and I'll see you.
Is there a percentage of the affordable unit would need to be ADA accessible? Just curious, since I haven't heard any conversations with that.
I don't want to speak out of turn, but I thought all of them have to be, but I, 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 it was ADA.
They have to be adaptable.
Adaptable is the word.
Yeah. It's limitations on elevators, ground floor, okay?
Yeah.
Cause I didn't hear that.
And that applies to all of the units, I believe. It's across the board.
Additional challenge.
Anyone else from the board? Kathy?
I have a, I have two questions or two, two things. Um, what is, uh, special needs? Because, um, a lot of the paperboard, um, it did say, uh, uh, special needs. Can you explain that?
Sure, it, it's.
Uh, you know, just so people would know what that is.
First of all, it's an affordable unit, that we're talking about an affordable unit.
Yeah.
That is, in this case, it's, it was a two-bedroom unit. So there, there are two beds into the one unit, you got credit under a special. one unit, you got credit under a special need scenario for, per bedroom, not per unit. So I'm calling out to the two bedrooms because you get two credits for that, one for each. And then you have to qualify. There's certain special needs and you qualify it. Somebody with developmental disabilities.
Okay.
Who could live there. Um, and usually there's a program where there's sometimes a caregiver. I don't know. I don't want to go too far down the road because it depends on, um, who occupies the unit and how it's managed. But there's essentially a, a manager of that unit so that the people living in there are cared for properly.
I should tell you that you, there, it may be, that, that was an accommodation that the special master in the court did for us the last round because we were one unit short, one credit short, let's say. And, um, we didn't have anywhere to put that credit. And so they permitted paperboard to have one unit via two-bedroom special needs unit, which we got credit for two. That may not happen. It may be, because I've been talking to the developer, they may just give us two units instead of that one special needs unit. So it doesn't, it may or may not happen. I don't want you to, I want to promise that that's what we're going to have.
And that's all part of this preparation of this redevelopment plan for Garwood.
Like it did mention it, like in your handout, and I just wanted to.
Because that's what's there today.
Clarify.
Yep.
Okay. And the other thing is with regard to the, the, uh, paperboard one, um, we didn't do a final approval of, for the site plan. Just want to clarify.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You weren't like involved in that.
Oh, yeah.
Like at the time, but I just want to.
Okay, so it has preliminary site plan approval, not final site plan approval. Stand corrected.
I, you know, something minor, but.
It's important. There will be a whole new site plan application after the adoption of the amended redevelopment plan for paperboard property. There'll be a public hearing, notice public hearing on a site plan application.
I'm sorry.
In front of this planning board on the new.
And there's one other comment that, that I'd like to make, Chairman. Um, I think we're going to be, uh, we're going to have a busy summer.
On vacation July first.
So, you know.
I'm not around until September.
Till September.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, anyone else on this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. My question is just procedural, um, more for Mr. Renaud. So what's coming to the council, just so I can explain this correctly to my colleagues, is going to be a, in theory, a, a resolution uh, affirming the governing body's support of what the planning board, uh, does tonight. Is that?
Correct, because the resolution, which I've actually already prepared, is going to look very similar to the resolution that's in front of you tonight. Except it'll say, instead of saying adopting, it will say endorsing.
Okay.
And agreeing, essentially agreeing to implement the, um, housing element and fair share plan.
And then, and that's a resolution, so it only requires the one meeting. And we would be able to adopt it in the one meeting.
Yep.
And then at some future date, council would have to consider ordinances for, um, some of these zoning changes and other things that are part of the plan's recommendations.
Yes.
All of them, actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else from the board have any questions? All right, seeing none. What I will do is, um, well, I'll open it up to the general public for a half an hour, but then we'll take a break if it continues. And, uh, we'll take a, a ten-minute recess and then we'll come back after that. But in the meantime, I'm going to open it up to the general public, um, for questions, commentary. And I'm going to ask, um, part of the public that, uh, for each person to be able to come up once, uh, first, and then we'll offer it up to anyone else from the general public who would be, um, willing to or want to participate. Um, and then if there's a further up follow-up question by the same person who was up earlier, we'll return to that person after everyone has had an opportunity. So with that, I'll open it up for, uh, general public.
Uh, good evening, Chair. Ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Bruce.
Patterson.
Okay, yeah.
Three two five Willow Avenue. Um, thank you for the half hour. I think I'm going to take it all, by the way.
Go for it.
First, first issue I find, uh, I, I'm looking at the handout, which is great, and you went over in detail. And then I went back and I actually added the, uh, affordable housing units together. And I came out with sixty-eight, where backways, Mr. Mistrada said it was sixty-three, and then, of course, the seventeen bonus, uh, credits come up to eighty. But, but if it is truly sixty-eight, if you go through here, that sounds like we got actually a, a five extra affordable housing units that we probably can remove from these sheets. So I don't know, somebody can just go through it and double check, make sure it's sixty-three or sixty.
I think someone's actively going through it right now.
Okay.
Uh, now, I, I did, uh, download the six hundred and twenty-two page document. God bless you, Mr. Mistrada. And, and scanning through it, I, I have a lot of questions here. I don't know if you want me to ask and then you answer, or you want me to go through it first.
Why don't you go through it first and then we'll return to it?
On, on the paperboard, which is also on this handout, uh, it looks like of the fifty-seven, so forty-five units are going to be age restricted and twelve are going to be the affordable housing. Now, the question is, you know, you can use thirty percent age restricted, from what I understand. So why can't we use the thirty percent of the forty-five units that are being proposed on paperboard two uh, to offset our obligation, even though they're not built yet? But why can't we use that?
Because we're already using the twenty-four credits, which are age restricted from the Westfield Senior Housing Center.
And you're saying we maxed out on using the, uh?
Twenty-four, thirty percent of eighty, we use in the twenty-four from Westfield Senior Housing Center. We've maxed out our age restricted component and, and we, we would not get credit for it.
We don't need them and we can't use them.
Okay. A person.
It summed it up.
Yeah, it might be better if we, you would answer your questions as you come up with them.
All right, yeah, and just more comment on that, you know, you're having paperboard number two having, uh, fifty-seven units. And I'm just wondering, and maybe this is another question for another time, but, but, you know, we have a pilot on the original paperboard one. I mean, how can we avoid having a pilot on the second paperboard, only, only because these pilots are really hurting the towns. Um, you know, I'm against pilots. I'm just wondering, can you address whatever financial agreement or amended to paperboard one? Why can't you, uh, remove the pilot wordage on paperboard two?
That's not part of the plan, so we really can't address that here. That's the, the pilot or no pilot is not part of the housing element and fair share plan.
All right, so it's something to think about anyway, so.
Right.
Uh, page one eighty-four on, on the six hundred and twenty-two, uh, we're talking about the Heidi property that everybody knows about. Um, back, I don't know what, whatever year it was, it was approved for nine units. And I see in the six hundred and twenty-two page document, it refers to it as ten units. Is that just a typo?
I don't, what page again?
Uh, one eighty-four. I, yeah, on the PDF document of six hundred and twenty.
Well, Bruce, but it is nine units. We all know that.
It is, yeah, okay, then, sorry. I mean, we should know that, you know, only because we argue.
Bruce, you and I know that quite well. It's nine.
Okay, okay, it's always a typo. Yeah, exhibit, exhibit A and B lists a lot of properties and, and it identifies certain properties to, to be the affordable housing properties. Well, why, why are all those other properties listed? That's, uh, pages one ninety-nine to two oh three, exhibit A and B. You list a lot of properties in that.
This one here?
Yeah, that's the.
Uh, it's your vacant land analysis. So you're going to have to, you have to identify every property. You're, you're required to obtain a list of, uh, properties that meet a certain tax code and classification. You get that from a tax assessor. And then we are supposed to put them in a table form and identify any vacant properties that are suitable for redevelopment. I'm not allowed to cut this.
They have to list every one that's what, class one and what else?
Uh, fifteen C.
Yeah, fifteen C, which would be vacant land that's taxed.
So this is a roll of properties that is, we requested, we get from the tax assessor, it goes into the plan. I'm not allowed to eliminate any of those properties, but I have to sign an RDP to any property that's vacant and available for development.
Okay, well, I want to, I had additional questions. Uh, the, yeah, pages two fifty through, I, I guess around six hundred. There's a lot of old ordinances and financial agreements, and there's actually the draft, uh, resolutions and ordinances that you're referring to during this meeting. But I'm just, why do you include all these old ones?
Because you have to show that you either have the zoning in place or that you're going to adopt the zoning. So some of them, we already have the zoning in place, so we don't have to do new ordinances and we could just attach those.
For example, we have the paperboard, uh, the paperboard redevelopment plan in there. And we acknowledge that it's, the new one's not ready yet, so we're giving you the old one. The old one will be swapped out once Borough Council and the Planning Board adopt a new one.
And the mandatory set aside ordinance, all those kinds of ordinances that are already adopted are part of the plan.
You're required to include it in the appendix.
Oh, okay. Those pages will remain?
They will remain, but they're going to go from draft documents as we go through the next stage after tonight. You're going to see a lot of meetings of adopting ordinances as we talked about earlier.
Yeah, the later appendix or X and Y.
It's, we're going to. What should happen is all the draft should, one by one or in a bundle, turn into final ordinances that are officially adopted.
Um, this one's, I guess, more of a common, probably should be answered, asked later on. But appendix Y talks about, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund monies. It's a hundred and twenty-eight for round three, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand for round three. Uh, round four on page six twenty-two is going to be three hundred and thirty-four, uh, thousand dollars. And, and I'll ask later, but I mean, like, has any of this money been spent? You know, you don't have to tell me because, uh, somebody else has to answer it. But anyway, just wondering, you know, what's going on with all that money? It's over three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, you did.
The money could only be used for affordable housing purposes.
Yeah, and you did list it in that.
And I did list them in there. There's maximums, minimums of how that money can and, and has to be used. Affordability assistance, um, professional fees and, and supportive housing and so on and so forth. And it's also a projection of what we anticipate on collecting over the next ten years.
Right. You can use it to subsidize things that might provide affordable housing. You could use it, there's a number of uses that you could have for it.
Yeah, actually, my question was, has it been spent? So, but that's another day.
I think some of it has, but I don't know for what.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Westfield, I, I guess, somebody must know about Westfield. They had affordable housing obligation of three hundred and sixty-four and, and they ended up with sixty-seven, which is about a sixty percent reduction. I, I have no idea what they did, but are you aware of that?
No, go ask Westfield. I'm not going to speak.
All right. Somehow it went down sixty percent. That, that's amazing. Uh, you mentioned a master plan. This is in a, this is six hundred and twenty-two page document. Is it actually an amendment to the master plan? Yes?
Yes, housing element, part of them, it's part of the master plan.
Yeah, how can I, uh, see what the master plan is, by the way? You're finished with it, right?
Online.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's online.
It's online?
It's been online for years.
Yeah, I really didn't see, uh, the thirty, there were thirty-one present need rehab units we owe for the fourth round. That really wasn't fully addressed. I would, I would assume probably the, uh, spending plan is going to take care of that.
No, it, it clearly addresses that the prior round, um, present need obligation was fully addressed by the borough through the county program. And we, uh, anticipate that we will continue using, as Bob said, the Union County, uh, Community Development Block Grant and Union County Home Improvement Programs to satisfy the thirty-one unit present need as we've done in the past.
So somewhere out in our town of about sixteen hundred homes, there's thirty-one that obviously are in a decrepit condition that it can be rehabbed.
I understand. They don't go out and survey and pick out thirty-one homes. They do it on a statistical basis. So there, there's theoretically thirty-one homes that's the, is what should be rehabilitated.
All right, the, uh, yeah, this, with this handout, there was also on pages one eighty-three to one ninety-four, there was like a different way of, uh, identifying affordable housing units. For example, there was a couple of triangles over near New Street and Myrtle that was on that list. I'm just wondering, you know, you have this.
Vacant land.
That was, that was.
Small pieces of vacant land.
Yeah, and you, and you're identifying affordable housing units and what we know in the vacant land.
No, there's three properties that are identified that you're referring to, highlighted in red, that are vacant properties identified by the DCA when they did the land capacity factor. That said, these three properties could produce affordable housing. You do not have to produce affordable housing on every vacant parcel in the borough. But what you have to do is create, you have to sign an RDP, a realistic development potential. If that property were to be developed with a minimum of five units with one set aside as affordable, and you go up from there based on the density and you add, you create, you calculate what's called a realistic development potential. And you add that number into your calculations. And then we are constructing and addressing that number on the six properties that I talked about today. You don't have to use a vacant parcel in your town. Not every vacant parcel in your town has to be developed for affordable housing. However, you have to account for it. And that's what we did through that exercise. It's called the vacant land analysis. And we also had a vacant land analysis in the prior round.
Okay, they, they're not presently targeted, obviously.
They're not targeted. We assign a number to them, but then we build out elsewhere.
All right, um, the board did discuss about rent versus purchase. You know, it sure seems, uh, most of these high density that have been built in the past are all rentals. I mean, how can we, you know, I'm glad you're pushing for the first, Kathy, but, uh, how can we increase the, the purchasing option?
Every municipality wants, has the same response. We've, we're, we're, we have too much rental housing. We want more for sale housing. We're working with developers as much as we can to encourage that. Some developers, it's a flat out hard no. They won't even consider it. It's their option. It's not ours. So you have to work with them. Unfortunately, a lot of times in order to get for, for sale housing, you gotta, you have to work out something.
You're only allowed to zone for uses, not for ownership.
Yeah. So you can encourage it. You could try and negotiate it, but they don't have to agree to it. That's why I didn't want to, I, I, I mentioned it in the plan because that was part of the discussion, but the borough doesn't have a lot of say in that matter.
And I'm also just wondering, I didn't, I haven't been following, uh, what's going on with Dietrich's Liquors, but, uh, there's residential going up there?
We followed up with a, a request from Dietrich's, uh, by letter, uh, to find out where they stand right now. Um, so we have not heard back yet from them.
We couldn't squeeze an affordable housing unit out of Dietrich's?
Well, yeah, if they, if they actually develop, yeah, we could.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Mistrada. Bob owns concise.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else from the public?
Hi.
Hi.
Laura Thompson, three twenty five F. Um, I've never been to a meeting like this before about the town planning or whatever. So I have a couple of questions. Um, you said that family units can be one bedroom?
Yes.
That's ridiculous. That's ridiculous. Okay. And that's.
We don't write the rules. A maximum of twenty percent of the units can be one bedroom.
All right, um, with the thought that fifty percent, if I'm not mistaken, kind of had to be, uh, family units.
Yeah, correct, yes.
Which now impacts the school system even more than we anticipated before.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Which is something that I guess the town's going to have to deal with. The state does not help with that at all.
Yeah, as a, as a general rule, um, I mean, I wouldn't tell you that because there are X number of apartments, there aren't going to be any children in them. Yeah.
Um, the traffic study that was done in.
All of these are questions that everybody in, you know, in every suburban town and frankly everywhere brings up. But unfortunately, there isn't anything that we can do about it because it's a state mandate.
Um, are we going to redo the traffic study? Or they rebuild? Or they put this together?
Um.
The traffic study will be done in twenty-one.
Well, each, each applicant for site plan approval will be required to do what they have to do to get site plan approval, which will, which will include, I am sure, traffic studies. But those traffic studies, understand, um, a municipality is not allowed to bar a development because of off-site traffic conditions. You can regulate traffic conditions on the site, but a, if something is zoned, you can't say when they come in for approval, the roads are too crowded. It's just not permitted.
What happens if we, like you said, once we build on everything that's available, my understanding from what you were saying was that, you know, the, like the factories that are over on South Avenue, those people don't want to sell their property. They don't have to sell their property.
Correct.
So what happens when we have nothing to build? The state can't make you build when you don't have any place to put it.
Correct.
Okay.
At some point, all of this, at some point, all of this comes to a point of absurdity, but um, yes, they can't make you build, and if people don't want to put affordable housing where we've permitted it, they are not required to do that.
Okay. And you said something about rehabbing houses, private homes.
Yes.
How do they go about doing that?
There are income limits. Uh, there is a regulation, the county regulations are one and two family owner occupied units only. They apply through the county, um,
Home Improvement Program.
Yeah, it's a, that's, it's called the Home Improvement Program, but it's a, um, it's a Community Development Block Grant Program. You apply, um, some of them are loans, some of them are grants. Uh, I think the loans, you have to agree to remain in the house for X number of years. Uh, or, and then some of them have forgivable loans, but if you leave before the time, then you have to pay it back, et cetera.
The other thing, when you keep talking about high density, um, building, is there any way to stop it from being that way? Versus like what we've done over at the Heidi property, doing something along those lines in those big pieces of property? So that it's more aesthetic to the township that we, that we live in versus, I mean, what we're turning this town into is Elizabeth. Quite frankly, we're putting apartment buildings everywhere we have one. You know, you're talking about in the, in the eventuality of putting a second story on some of the strip malls that we have. Everything is throwing up, 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 you know, the, the, the private home is becoming obsolete in this town at this point. We're gonna, they're gonna outnumber us, basically.
Well, the, I mean, the, an answer, not, not an answer, but an answer um, is that if you look at all of the other municipalities along North and South Avenue, you can look in Roselle Park, you could look at Cranford, you could look in Westfield, Scotch Plains, et cetera. And they're all exactly the same, and the reason is because you have no alternative, because it's a mandate. And if we, if we say, for example, we're not going to approve anything more than, say, eight units an acre, they'll just sue us and the, the, the plan won't be approved. They'll, um, they'll object. The plan will not be approved and we'll be back, um, in court with no plan and open, if we, if our plan is not approved, then we're open to builders remedy lawsuits where people can come in at whatever density they want, uh, and claim that is necessary in order to build the project, so. Um, it, it's a matter of either you zone it for them as best we can or they zone it for us, which, and the original, the first one is preferable.
Um, I, I'll be honest, I'm no fan of the big bermello buildings. Quite frankly, I don't find them attractive at all. My biggest problem with them is that they're four stories high. Nothing else in this town is four stories high. You can't limit that even.
The same answer as the one I just gave.
We're just stuck.
That i- if they can show that they can't build a an inclusionary development on that site at the height that we propose, uh, they can challenge the plan. But nobody's, I don't think that we don't have any four-story proposals in our plan, right?
We do.
Yeah, well, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Correct. Sorry.
Uh, yeah, Jen. Did you say something? Oh, I'm sorry. And that's it? Anyone else from the public? Bruce? Yeah, sure.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Patterson starts round two, do we have an answer for him for his round one question regarding the sixty-eight units we were, you were adding up there?
Yeah, it's twelve, twenty-four, fifteen, twelve is sixty-three, like I said earlier. And then the unmet need is two, eight and seven, which is seventeen, sixty-three and seventeen is eighty.
Want to make sure we had that.
Okay.
Just, what are the, what are the numbers you just said?
Twelve?
Yeah.
Twenty-four?
Yeah.
Fifteen?
Okay.
Twelve.
And the two, eight and seven.
Or when they could add it in.
Well, that's sixty-three.
Right.
And then two, eight and seven is the seventeen, sixty-three and seventeen is eighty.
Bonus.
That includes twelve bonus credits.
Two, eight and seven is what?
Unmet need. Twelve is bonus credits. Fifteen is ACP, twenty-four is senior, twelve is Garwood Paperboard two.
Use. Oh, Bruce Patterson, three twenty-five, Will Adam. Yeah, just for example, Garwood Rest. Your hand now. There's two affordable housing units, Mr.
Mm-hmm.
And why isn't that part of that total that credit?
I did, two, eight, seven. Garwood Rest is two, eight is standard nipple, eh, no.
Seven is standard nipple.
Eight is North Avenue.
North Avenue, mall's eight, and then standard nipple is seven.
But you add that with the twelve, twenty-four and fifteen.
And another twelve.
Two twelve.
There's two twelves there, Bruce.
Twelves.
And the other twelve?
Twelve from bonus credits and twelve is from.
Paperboard.
Paperboard two.
I'm talking about sixty-three versus sixty-eight, not going up to eighty.
No, there's no six.
Sixty, sixty-three is twelve, twenty-four, fifteen and twelve.
What happened to two, eight and seven?
They become the eight.
They.
That's the seven. It's sixty-three, the numbers are sixty-three plus seventeen. Sixty-three plus seventeen. The sixty-three is twelve on Paperboard two, twenty-four on Senior, fifteen on ACP, twelve is the bonus credits. That's sixty-three. The unmet need is two, eight, seven, Garwood Rest, Mall, Standard Nipple, sixty-three, seventeen is eighty.
All right, sorry, it actually part of, you know, the second time up, I kind of belabored, but no, it was just going to be a quick question.
Yeah.
Is Paperboard two going to go through the same process with traffic testimony and and professionals?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Slide plan. Okay, thank you, Sean. Anyone else in the public? If not, then I'll, I'll close it out, but I'll give one more opportunity. Anyone from the public would like to speak on anything? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close this, that portion of the meeting, and we'll, uh, come back to the board. Um, so we have a, uh, a proposed resolution.
Well, at this point.
Okay, go ahead.
At this point, Chairman, I'm going to circulate out. I know that Mr. Renat had prepared a, um, draft resolution, which I greatly appreciate because that saved me from having to do that. And I did actually though read it, and I made one such tiny little edit. Uh, it was not substantive. Uh, Bob did a far better job in this than I ever would have, uh, but let me just circulate out with the edit. I got like, I don't know, fourteen or fifteen of these. You only, if, for anybody who has the prior draft, it's really, it's just a, uh, kind of a technical edit defining that the H E F S P reference refers to the housing element and fair share plan, which frankly, the first time I read it, I was like, what the heck? It's H E S. H E F S P, but that's what it stands for. So I got some more of these.
Okay, and with that, we'll take five minutes for our folks to, uh, to read this and digest it a little bit.
See, earlier draft, not only change like, uh, that one.
Yeah. So we're going to have a five minute recess. Some people don't have to use the facilities, so that we'll close it out for five minutes.
Okay. Um. Okay, let's, let's do it this way. Okay, so seven is a standard nipple. Garwood. Or there to guard more. Garwood Rest, two.
So the rest was really done.
Two, Garwood Rest, okay. Eight, ACP, fifteen, that right there.
What?
Uh, fifteen. One above it is twenty-four from Senior Housing. And, and, um, and twelve bonus.
Thirty-six. Fifty-one.
Very good.
Sixteen, sixty-eight.
Yeah. Thank you for being.
That's Bruce. Hey, so. All right, so you know what? What I have here is twelve plus.
This is the kind of thing that.
Eight. Plus two.
We're, we're shot at very.
Plus fifteen.
I mean.
Twelve. Okay, so you're missing something.
I'm just saying, yes, let's. Do you make sure the math is?
Yeah. Not yet, not yet. I, I'm sure. Working out. Okay. You don't want to do, you don't want to do. So I'm just going to circle, okay, not just seven. Before that, we've got twelve.
I figure out. Of course, there's.
Twelve.
There's no plan in that city, so I.
Before that, you got. For that, you got fifteen, that's fifteen, you're right.
But I had trouble.
For that, you got two. For that, you got eight. Before that, you got twelve. All right, so you're missing twelve. Here's a second twelve. That second twelve is the bonus credits. You're not, you're not in here. You're not in here.
As I said, as I said. Out of six.
I, as I said, I was. Fifteen, everybody up. Well.
When I think.
It's the twelve.
Our loan is much the same thing, so.
Twelve, twelve bonus credits.
I don't know, but it's not. Basically, making. What I've worked.
But you are correct. We add up these numbers. But you're, you're absolutely right.
Yeah. No, listen to. Yeah, I, I actually thought there were a lot more people here. I think it is, because I mean, you're still having on the screen. And I think they have the TV tomorrow. I'm assuming, I mean, uh, because she was up there. They hear it, yeah, I know, see, yeah, see, but I don't think, I don't think, I think it is. It's not only have a little.
How about yourself?
Good, thanks. I'm just giving you. Right, and then I'm sending. So be joining clerks, Dwight, is that the next step or Dwight?
I don't know.
Yes. Yep. Send us their clerks, and we also have to send, or I guess Mike just already, but they're going to send the cop.
Right. Um, do I do like a notice of decision, like in a normal board resolution?
I think you could just. So some closing, the resolution was adopted.
I know. Like a, what word, you know, on an application, okay.
I.
All right, very good. Can I just send Bill?
No, no, I work for.
You should tell him to ride by. My daughter, they're, they put a second floor on while they're in the process. Uh, they bought three Blake. Right, wasn't it? My daughter bought your son's.
Yeah. And, and actually, I saw a picture of the second. My son, who was there, now lives in my house.
Right, right.
Cranford, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that was a nice house, uh, wouldn't know, then fixed it up. He got it when he, when he bought it. It had, it was like, I was like, it was in all divided by. Multiple shit. I've never been there.
And you've indicated that too, so I.
They want it.
Nothing went down, it's just computers.
Yes, that's funny.
I like that.
That's why you would get enough. It's just like. So you say, you're.
So how do they?
Wait, no, that's why.
They're waiting together, I think they're waiting. You know, you know how construction goes, they could clean, and she was expecting, so. They're eating her in laws.
I gotta keep their. Is that it? I'm going to keep it over here. You were, you were talking months ago.
We got to come back to, uh, to business here. So. Adele, you ready to go? Okay. If everyone's had an opportunity to read the resolution adopting the twenty twenty-five housing element and fair share plan, um, I would like to have a motion to adopt.
I'll make that motion.
Local police, Adele.
Mayor Blumenstock?
Aye.
Ms. Lysak?
Aye.
Councilman Carney?
Aye.
Ms. Vellagio?
Aye.
Mr. Neersted?
Aye.
Mr. Barkin?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Ms. Bianco?
Aye.
And Chair Greed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you to the general public for, uh, for attending. Um, I know it's, it's been challenging the best, but, uh, but it's been a good, a good evening for descriptive dialogue. And I thank Mike Mastrata and Bob Renat for putting all the hard work that they do um, into these plans and to, uh, to go forward with this with us.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson, thank you to the board, and thank you to the public. Those are good questions. I must, uh, hopefully, we can move on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Second, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and we're adjourned. Wow.
Just great. Renat asked, they questioned whether he should go home.
You have a lot of.